Thirty seconds, thirty seconds until broadcast. Five, four, three, two.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 2nd, School Board of Alachua County's meeting. Would you all please join me and stand and join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's say thank you and to our attorney. Go ahead, you can.
Good evening.
You can move it, you can move it towards you, move it.
During the School Board of Alachua County's business meetings, reasonable decorum is required during all portions of the meeting. Conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting is not allowed. Any individual causing disruption or interference will be asked to stop. Failure to comply may result in removal from the meeting. The School Board encourages speakers to focus on issues and constructive input. The School Board impartially receives all public comments. Comments that are obscene, abusive, or threatening are not allowed. Thank you for supporting a respectful environment where all voices can be heard. For additional information, the School Board's policy regarding public comment is available online, alachua schools dot net forward slash public input policy. Thank you.
Thank you. So with us in today's meeting, we have, normally we start our meeting off with a student, presentation by a student group, and I see Ms. Rolo at the lecturing today if you want to set up today's, tonight's performers.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Patton, and District Administrators. My name is Diana Rolo and I'm the Curriculum Specialist for K through 12 Fine Arts for our district. And I am very pleased to be here to kick off another year of fantastic performances by our incredibly talented students. Our performing arts programs are a vital part of our schools and communities. And once again, we have an exciting lineup of performances and events scheduled for this school year. Our marching bands will be hitting the road this fall to perform at our elementary schools. Our chorus, band, and orchestra students are already hard at work preparing for All State auditions. And our theater programs are also rehearsing for their fall productions. Tonight, we are highlighting one of those outstanding theater programs with students from the Eastside High School Drama Department, under the direction of Daniel Litten. The Eastside High School thespians consistently receive superior ratings at districts and state festivals, and they've produced a variety of shows, musicals, productions, including Mary Poppins, SpongeBob the Musical, and most recently, Pippin. I'd like to take a moment to thank Risa Emma, one of the APs at Eastside High School. She joined us this evening to represent the admin team. And on to our student performers, performing this evening. Up first, we have Patrick Ford singing Corner of the Sky from Pippin, and Aiden Cotton, Callum Daly, and Anna Niemann performing Who I'd Be from Shrek the Musical. Please welcome the Eastside High School Drama Department.
I'm going to live a life that's extraordinary. Now, I know there is something...
Fulfilling, something completely fulfilling.
Yeah, that's it. Something completely fulfilling, and I'm gonna find it. Now, I might not know what I want to do or where I want to go, but I know this one thing. Everything has its season, everything has its time. Show me a reason and I'll soon show you a rhyme. Cats fit on the windowsill, children fit in the snow. So why do I feel I don't fit in anywhere I go? Rivers belong where they can ramble. Eagles belong where they can fly. I've got to be where my spirit can run free. I've gotta find my corner of the sky. Every man has his daydreams, every man has his goals. People like the way dreams have of sticking to the soul. Thunder clouds have their lightning, nightingales have their song. But don't you see, I want my life to be something more than long. Rivers belong where they can ramble. Eagles belong where they can fly. I've got to be where my spirit can run free. I've gotta find my corner of the sky. So many men seem destined to settle for something small. But I won't rest until I know I'll have it all. So don't ask where I'm going, just listen when I'm gone. And far away, you'll hear me singing softly to the dawn. Rivers belong where they can ramble. Eagles belong where they can fly. I've got to be where my spirit can run free. I've gotta find my corner of the sky. I guess I'd be a hero with sword and armor clashing, looking semi-dashing, a shield within my grip. Or I could be a Viking, and I would tell a story, one that tells of glory. And I'd would dot the eyes I'd fail to see. I'd reach the farthest reaches, I'd tailed and taste the things I earn. And do it all while rhyming. That's who I'd be, that's who I'd be. Or I could be a poet and write a different story, one that tells of glory and wipes away the lies. Into the skies I'd throw it, the stars would do the telling. The moon would help with spelling. And night would dot the eyes, I'd write a verse, recite a joke with wit and perfect timing. I'd share my heart, confess the things I yearn. And do it all while rhyming. But we all learn, but we all learn. An ogre always hides, an ogre's fate is known. An ogre always stays in the dark and all alone. So yes, I'd be a hero, and if my wish were granted, life would be enchanted, oh, soar the stories say. Of course, I'd be a hero, and I would scale a tower to save a hot house flower and carry her away. But standing guard would be a beast, I'd somehow overwhelm it. I'd take a breath, I'd get the girl, then I'd remove my helmet. We stand and stare, we speak of love, we feel the stars ascending. We'd share a kiss, I'd find my destiny. I'd have a hero's ending, a perfect happy ending. That's how it would be, a big, bright, beautiful world, but not for me.
An ogre always hides, an ogre's fate is known.
An ogre always stays in the dark and all alone.
So yes, I'd be a hero, and if my wish were granted, life would be enchanted, so the stories say. Of course, I'd be a hero, and I would scale a tower to save a hot house flower and carry her away. A perfect happy ending, that's how it should be.
So before our young people go, would any of our colleagues like to have something to say to them? Dr. McNeely?
Students, excellent. Perfection at the highest level. Thank you ever so much for coming tonight, and I wish we could have extra applause so you would have to do an encore, but thank you ever so much. Thank you to the instructors as well.
Ms. Playback.
Well, I have an affinity to Broadway shows, and I make a point of going to New York City twice a year to see Broadway. I hope you've gotten up there. Have you been able to get up there with your teachers? Well, I can see all of you on Broadway. Your voices are clear, you guys are phenomenal. You were supporting your fellow students when they were singing. I love it. I think it's great and so proud of your performance. I mean, like, I want to see you on Broadway. Let us know when you get up there, all right?
So, you know, the young man with the glasses, I can't recall your name, but your real name, but in my, yeah, in my head, he is Curtis from Dreamgirls. At the start, huh? Jimmy, Jimmy, that's right, Jimmy. Jimmy from Dreamgirls at Star Center, remember him there? Dr. McNeely, I think you saw him at, so all I could see, you played, you played that role very well, and you did very well tonight. So thank you all for coming and opening up our meeting and sharing with us your incredible talent, and I'm sure we will hear from you guys if there are productions that are coming up during the school year. Please don't hesitate to send the invite to us so we can come and join you guys. Come and see you all.
Yeah. Oh, thank you so very much. Oh, I'll stand too. Hi, everybody. So we are doing the Crucible for our fall play. We open up on November 6th, that is a Thursday. We will run that weekend, the 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th. And then the following weekend, there will be the 13th, 14th, and 15th, okay? That is the Thursday, Friday, Saturday of that next week. We hope to see you all there. We'll have some incredibly, incredibly talented faces within this cast, a couple that you see sitting right here. And on top of that, we'll also be applying it for the Florida State thespian Festival Main Stage event, which is a big deal, and I'm hoping that we can get it. So thank you all for your support and thank you all for being here.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Yes, and I echo that too, just, and if you guys do make it to Broadway, please feel free to send us some passes, we'd love that. But also just, I really appreciate that. I just love, you know, going to our schools and just seeing how artistically talented so many of our students are. You guys are exceptionally talented, and this is coming from somebody who has almost no artistic talent. So I extra appreciate you all, so just thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And just to say from us too, thank you for being here tonight at the beginning of the year and to think you're already ready for your musical in just a couple of weeks away. It just tells you the talent. So I too saw you in Dreamgirls, it was absolutely fabulous. But I think what's even more is that it's due to you and your skillset of teaching them. They also just perform with all their colleagues from around the county. That's what I think is so phenomenal with all the theater we have. So it's like, you know, if you're a basketball team, you play with the same people. You guys just do an amazing job, and thank you for representing the administration at the school too. So best wishes, what year is everybody? Okay, so we have a couple, a couple more years. So best wishes your senior year, it's always exciting. Thank you for being here tonight, our first of the year.
Thank you all. All right, so colleagues. I'm not sure, Jackie got one, I think while they were performing, she got one already, yeah. So before we adopt our agenda, just want to make you all aware of a couple changes. We had the consent agenda item number six, the uniform assessment calendar, will be moved to action number two. And I am toying with this one, I had a gazillion questions about the school surveillance camera one, so I'm gonna go ahead and just put that, move that one down as well. Consent number four will be A1, and we'll make consent number six A2, okay? Are there any other items you all wish to bring from consent to action? Okay, CNN, can I get a motion to approve our agenda with those, okay? So motion by Mr. Vu and second to Dr. McNeely, there's no further discussion of changes, all in favor? Aye. Opposees? Okay. And I would like to say on this evening, I didn't say earlier that Dr. Rockwell is not feeling well, so she won't be joining us this evening, it'll just be the four of us, she's not on Zoom. It's just, just us just here in the boardroom, okay? So with that, Ms. Johnson or, and staff over there, I'm gonna turn it over for our public comment for non-agenda items. If you would call the folks, Ms. Johnson, or when your name is called, be called a couple at a time, if you would, please queue up on the back wall there at the lecturing.
Did we want to see the video?
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a video. So I don't hear, so before we do that, we will have our video, please.
So just, it's a combo video, so we're gonna actually back up an entire, and the opening of school day, as well as our academic achievement highlights at the same time in one video. So thank you, Aton. And we want to thank Sheriff Scott and Chief Moya from Gainesville Naples Police Department who celebrated our celebrities walking in on the red carpet of opening day of school.
Thank you for that, and staff and Dr. Patton for that. So I do just want to remind folks that they didn't see that, the flu miss form needs to be turned in and update your important forms on Skyward or get a paper form. They're asking us to do that by September 30th. I saw that go by pretty quickly. So we're ready now for our non-agenda items, citizen input.
Madam Chair, our first three speakers are Genesis Jimenez Chavez, Declan Harnett, and Jane Spear.
If you state your name, you have two minutes with the board.
Hello, my name is Genesis Jimenez Chavez. I'm a current student here in Gainesville, and I first want to thank the board, the chair, and the superintendent for all that you do for our students. I am here today to bring attention to the fentanyl crisis, a crisis that currently takes the lives of 150 Americans, including youth, each and every single day. I want you all to imagine a sugar packet of just one gram. Now imagine that all the sugar in that packet were to be purely, purely fentanyl. That would be enough to take the lives of over 500 individuals. And despite fentanyl being 50 times stronger than heroin, most don't even know that they're taking it. Teenagers especially are falling victim to non-prescription fake pills that are being labeled as OxyContin, Percocet, or Adderall, but these pills can contain deadly fentanyl. And these fake pills are so convincing that even trained Drug Enforcement Administration agents can't tell the difference between fake pills and the real thing. And what's even scarier is that these are often easily distributed amongst close friends, at parties, or even on social media apps such as Snapchat. For a teenager, all an overdose takes is one split-second decision. One moment of pressure, of boredom, and curiosity is all that it takes. And this starts early, which is exactly why we have to reach youth. We are urging the board to take action and to protect our schools, students, and families. I've read so many heartbreaking stories of moms and dads who wish that their sons or daughters had knew about the true dangers of pill experimentation. I believe that the best way to protect the students of Alachua County is to effectively educate them on why they should never experiment with anything, not even once. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir, you have two minutes with the board, state your aim.
Hi, my name is Declan Harnett. My friend and colleague Genesis just informed you of the fentanyl crisis. I'm here to tell you about our way to address this issue. Genesis and I lead an initiative called Not Even Once, also known as NEO, which she conveniently placed in the last minute of her speech. NEO is a nonprofit organization that believes the root cause of many fentanyl-related overdoses is a lack of awareness, especially among young people. By starting at the source through education and awareness efforts, we believe it may be possible to prevent hundreds of deaths. In NEO, we deliver short, interactive, 20-minute presentations to students where we humanize the epidemic, show its consequences, and make it understandable. This is presentations by teens, for teens. For the past two years, we have been working closely with the School Board of Okaloosa County, Florida, and their Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Marcus Chambers, to deliver these presentations to school principals, mental health counselors, but most importantly, every single high school in the county. In just under a year, we reached over 2,000 kids. We believe that by educating the youth through engaging and relatable presentations, we are actively fighting against the fentanyl crisis. In statistics, there is a phenomenon called diffusion of information. If just one kid goes and tells five friends, and only three of those kids were to tell their fathers and mothers, we would have reached 11 people. So if only half of the 2,000 kids NEO reached Okaloosa County went home and told their parents and friends, that means we have reached over 11,000 people. In a world where test strips and Narcan are only half effective, the best way to prevent fentanyl overdoses in our area is by being informed about what you may be consuming. We'd like to extend an invitation to Superintendent Dr. Patton to meet with us and talk more about the NEO initiative, our presentation, and how we can tailor to the needs of Alachua County students. We truly believe this partnership could save lives.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jane Spear. Thank you Superintendent, Board Members, and Staff. I want to address the issue of the new public comments policy. I know that everyone in this room, especially the board, wants to be sure and offer everyone an opportunity to speak. A question I have is how can I address an issue that is not on the agenda, but is brought up by a member of the public? And when I hear that, I feel like that another perspective needs to be presented. It's not on the agenda, so I haven't signed up. Should I complete a public comments request form for every school board meeting? And if I do that, may I sometimes decline when my name is called? And if I have passed when my name is called, and then someone else speaks up, and I feel I need to respond, how do I address that? Have I given up my turn? Again, I know that this board is, it's very important that you all have public comments, and I know that that's what you want. I am just concerned that the new policy may actually limit some public comments. So I would appreciate it if you all would review that a little bit and make some changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. So Ms. Johnson, before you call the next one, I failed to say, ask that we not applaud by clapping. I will say we could snap or wave your fingers, just as a way, just so that we can keep going, okay? I forgot to say that initially.
Madam Chair, our next three speakers are Peggy Vermont, Kadisha Camps, and Leanne Roan.
Hi, Dr. Peggy Vermont, before I start my comments, I just wanted to say that Alachua County Schools Theater Department is the best in the state, and I just want to say that Ms. Collins over at the Lincoln Howard Bishop Theater Troop is the best in the state. And we also have Mean Girls coming up in October that is also going to hopefully be on main stage, and also Bishop La Bishop. on main stage, and also Bishop, La Bishop, BHS has six coming out. So there's lots of theater. It's the best thing that we have. I think she would like a performance art magnet middle school at Lincoln, and I think it would be the best thing that the county could do to kind of get people into schools and keep students here. And so please support theater and arts as much as you possibly can, and those fine gentlemen were in the troupe with Ms. Collins. But I guess, what I came here to say is what I'm probably going to say at every meeting from now until the end of the year, and I'm talking mostly to you and to the Board of Education. I'm here again because I'm tired of the fascist, Christian, right-wing Republicans trying to take over our public schools at the local, state, and national level. Individuals like DeSantis, the Commissioner, the All-White and Right Board, Newberry's own, Timmy Martin, and our very own unelected school board member. I'm tired of them trying to destroy public education and infiltrate our community with their far-right Christian national views. I'm tired of it. I don't want it around my children. I don't like the hate and the propaganda, and I don't even like them having to try to be silent and pray in schools. I believe in the separation of church and state, and I specifically came to the board tonight to appeal, for you to appeal Newberry's decision and through the appellate court. I think you could sell that $1.3 million land that you had and pay for lawyers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vermont.
Hello, my name is Khadijah Camps. Thank you to the board for your time. I am currently the parent of four in Alachua County School District. My oldest daughter is a graduate of Gainesville High School, class of 2025, and she was a student in Mrs. Watts' class during her freshman year. As a parent, I've had to deal with my share of teachers and our faculty and staff when situations have arisen at my children's designated schools. There have been situations that warranted escalation, which I could have easily done. Some of my requests and pleas have been unrecognized, ignored, minimized, or dealt with insufficiently. However, even in those situations, I never had a thought in my mind to not properly escalate a process and immediately go after someone's reputation and livelihood. The things that have been done too and said about Ms. Watts is sickening and reprehensible. We all, as adults, have probably found ourselves on the receiving end of consequences to one degree or another within the workplace. The hope would be that the consequence would fit the behavior. In this situation, I strongly disagree that the consequence of revoking Mrs. Watts' teaching certificate and effectively removing her from the position, from her profession, is appropriate. Doing so would be a disservice to every student and family who could have the opportunity to encounter an educator who is passionate about her subject matter and passionate about the student she is teaching. This county, among others, are desperate for strong educators who have, who can tolerate our current educational climate with funding cuts, scarce resources, and a salary that is laughable for the requirements and responsibilities of our teachers. Yes, discipline is necessary, as it allows us to learn and grow, which we can all commit to for a lifetime. However, this disciplinary action is far past appropriate and serves absolutely no one. I stand with Ms. Watts. She should be able to continue to add to this great profession in educating our upcoming generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camps.
Hi, my name is Leanne Roane. I'm one of the teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing in this district. I'm going to say the same thing that I've said for the last few meetings when I came to speak. We still don't have a, we have not started the process to get a new superintendent hired for next year. As of June 30th, Dr. Patton's contract ends, and nothing has been done to start that process. The other thing, well, that's public anyway, the other thing that I wanted to mention tonight is a program for supplemental ELA instruction that is, has been bought out by another company. IStation was bought out by Amira recently, and now that program is either inaccessible or less than accessible to students who have speech impairments, who are English language learners, and who are deaf or hard of hearing and use other-than-speech to communicate. Imagine my surprise when I opened up IStation with my first student to find that he had to verbally answer the first question. It's not accessible to him at all, and it's not accessible to any of my students. So my question is, what supplemental program are those students going to use? There is no supplemental ELA instruction for those students. I would be open to any suggestions that you may have, but please think about these things when you're looking at programs for all students. There are some students who don't access information in the same way as you and I do and are not able to verbalize, to speak into a set of headphones for that instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't get your last name. I know your face, but I, Roane, thank you, Ms. Roane.
Madam Chair, our next three speakers are Shelby Bess, Scarlett Baker, and Jessica Baker.
Good evening. I am Scarlett Baker, and I am currently, and I currently attend Gainesville High School as a member of the Cambridge Program. Thank you, Vice Chair Sartin and the board for giving me an opportunity to speak. Earlier this year in February, our Advanced Placement World History teacher, Mr. Condi, was placed on administrative leave, leaving us without a teacher for the important half of that year. Going into that AP test, we were taught by doing something known as popcorn reading, which is out of a textbook. That is, taking turns reading paragraphs out of the textbook till we finish the chapter for the day. High schoolers, popcorn reading out of a textbook. I understand that it was an unusual situation, but calling that learning is a stretch, especially when the back, when those in the back would talk over those readings. Now, within this school year, similar has happened to Ms. Watts, though for different reasons. However, instead of my Cambridge class being taught by a substitute, now our current teacher, Mr. Price, has his former class being taught by a substitute. This is incredibly unfair to those students. While I am thankful to have a teacher, this is not the solution. And the solution for the allegations against Ms. Watts is not firing her. By placing Ms. Watts on administrative leave, our district isn't preventing students from having a bully teacher. They are failing students by taking away the single most important promise of this education system, learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Scarlett.
Hi, my name is Jessica Marzinski Baker, and I would like to thank Vice Chair Sartin, the board, and the superintendent for giving me this opportunity to speak. In addition to theater and sports starting, debate is also starting this fall, as Scarlett just showed. I would like to draw attention to a few matters in my two minutes. First, that I would hope in the coming months that you use facts and not fear to guide you. We have entered a situation where facts don't seem to matter. With the Newberry Charter situation, there was a lot of distortion of the facts, the rules of law, the administrative code, and we know the vote failed. So please do the right thing and keep fighting the charter. Joel CRB told one of the people as he was talking to them that this would serve as a template for other schools in the state. So we're not only fighting for Newberry, we're fighting for other schools in our state. In addition, I stand here supporting Ms. Watts. She has been an incredible teacher in the three weeks we've had her, and without facts other than the word of one parent, she has been placed on administrative leave. So I hope you use facts and not fear when you are investigating the matter. And we, as we all know, without facts, the board is now under the watchful eye of the state. So I don't think they're going to be using facts when they're determining what will happen to you all. So the question I have for you in my last 10 seconds is, what will you do? Will you take a stand for public education? Will you take a stand for our teachers? And will you take a stand for what is right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
We're looking for Shelby Bess. Is Shelby Bess in the room? If not, our next three speakers are Monique Costantino, Jane McNulty, and Javell Speed Strong.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Monique Costantino, and I live in Alachua County. My comment tonight revolves around our community's culture, which is all-inclusive until you become a threat to that community. Jeremy Klepper spoke at the last school board meeting. In the words of a former Alachua County School Board Superintendent, Jeremy Klepper is an anti-Semitic nationalist who has been in and out of jail, praises Hitler, spreads conspiracy theories, uses racial slurs, and posts about Jews poisoning every society they are in. Does Jeremy Klepper watch what he says in front of his children, or does he share his values and hatred with them? Do they then bring that hatred to school with them? Do they also hate the Jewish and Black and Brown children in their classrooms? This is the toxic culture we must fight in Alachua County. We must call it out and oppose it at every turn. Republicans make up only 29% of registered voters in Alachua County. The rest of us oppose their particular brand of hatred and sadism. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costantino.
So the MAGA Board of Education and Commissioner had already made up their minds to penalize Alachua County School Board. They were not interested in any letters, emails, or one-minute speeches. If it were a court of law, it would have ended differently because they would have had to present all the evidence and not just the pieces that played into their lies. No parent or person had been denied their First Amendment free speech rights, period. The MAGA Education Commissioner disparaged woke ideologies. So let's have a little lesson. Woke first appeared in the 1930s in African-American English to refer to being politically conscious and aware of racial prejudice and injustice. Its origins are derived from Black culture. Its mainstream appearance seems to have jumped out after the murder of George Floyd and the Black Lives Matter movement, which is also where anti-woke arose. The cultural appropriation of woke has grown to include social injustice to all marginalized groups. It has come to symbolize empathy, tolerance, inclusion, diversity, compassion, truth, and equality. But its roots are in Black history, which we can no longer teach. To be clear, anti-woke is racist. Never forget, MAGA lies and cheats to get what it wants. You are the current target. They will attempt to manufacture situations to set you up to fail.
Thank you, Ms. McNulty.
Protect yourselves.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board, teachers, staff, all those in attendance. My name is Javell Speed Strong, and I'm an Alacha County School Board bus driver. I am also the site leader for the Alachua County Education Association at the Gainesville Compound. I'm here to represent the interests of school board bus drivers who are in the union. As bus drivers, we are not being paid enough. Put that plan as simple. We're not being paid enough to do the job that we're being tasked with, and we're not being paid enough to deal with some of the things that we have to deal with. There is no reason that we should be mandated to come to work every day faithfully, only being allowed 10 days off and have to have side hustles. That is unacceptable. Now, I understand that pay raises do not fall out of the sky, and I also recognize that things such as this take patience. That being said, our time has been spent serving faithfully, and our patience is wearing thin. I also understand that we are not the only group campaigning for better wages. So please believe me when I say I have no desire to see our goals realized in a place of others. As a working-class American citizen, I believe all who work should be able to afford whatever standard of living is best accustomed to their needs. Lastly, I'd like to say that I do not see any of you as an enemy. The last time I came up here to speak, I made some thinly veiled threats to your position, and for that, I would like to formally apologize. It is my hope and prayer that our organization efforts are fruitful and that we can enjoy gainful collaboration as opposed to the alternative. I understand that you all are not this monolithic entity hell-bent on making our lives miserable. You're living, breathing people with families, and you have to make tough decisions based on the office that you've been elected to. I understand that. So please believe me when I say that I want collaboration. I don't want war. I don't want name-calling or anything else. I want us to collaborate to make a better future for all those who work in this great organization. God bless, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong. I think I heard correctly.
Our next three speakers are Crystal Testman, Molly Berg, and Annie Williams.
Vice Chair Sartin, Board members, Superintendent Patton, district staff. I'm Dr. Crystal Testman, ACEA Service Unit Director and the Instructional Vice President. I'll be sharing as much as I can of statements our members have asked me to read on their behalf, either because they feared retaliation or they could not be here due to second jobs, et cetera. Here is the first. "I, along with fellow teachers, am sick to death of micromanagement in every area possible. Morale is incredibly low for it to be the beginning of the school year." Second one. "Also, if there's a way to bring up starting work August 4th and first paycheck being August 22nd, it's really hard, really hard. How do they do this to us? Who else goes so long without paying employees for work, especially as we pay to decorate and prepare our learning environments for the best possible student outcomes and learning before school starts? Plus, they can't even post anything online due to possibility of retaliation from the government. Insane, just insane." Number three. "I just wanted to say a few words, and I hope that you all will reconsider some of the decisions that were made a few months back. I'm a clerical assistant, and I just wanted you to know that it's really hard to get any paperwork done on the computer due to the amount of traffic that comes on campus and needs immediate attention. I love my job, and I love what I do. I believe that all clerical assistants should have their one hour back so that we can have a chance to enter our work into the computer and keep up with the filing paperwork. We need our hour back. If you are not able to give us that one hour back, could you all consider adding another teacher workday to the calendar? That way, we could at least get the work done on the computer without any distractions." This person is working in the attendance office, front office. They sub when the nurse is out, the bookkeeper's out, they hold stuff for them, they help with parking decals, students, staff. I'm going to skip the rest of that one and go to the fourth one. "I'm a front desk receptionist, and my hours were cut from eight to seven. I can attest that this has been a most difficult change mainly because there are not enough hours in the day to complete my day-to-day tasks." And then she goes on to talk about all of her tasks, and just as an added thing for me, they also need their hours back so they can get paid.
Thank you, Dr. Testman.
Good evening to everyone. My name is Annie Williams. I've been working at Rollins School about 13 years, and altogether in education, approximately 40-some-year years I have been seen. I've seen a lot of disappointment for our teachers, our students, and our salaries. And however, you are expected, us educators, to be successful with no support in our education field. You are failing our children with no resources, no support, no concerns, and no finances and raises. Our children is our future. How can we build our future, future, without assistance resources and our well-being? God put us here to embrace ourselves, our children, and our families. We need help. I pray and hope you all can find it in your heart to do what is right about our teachers, our bus drivers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers. We are failing our children's future. So look at yourselves and say, how do we help this school and their crisis? I pray God will lay it on your heart to do right by our school's crisis and school administrations to manage our schools to a higher performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Hello, my name is Molly Berg, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Ms. Watts Lauren Watts was my teacher during the 2024 through 2025 school year, and she- Lauren Watts was my teacher during the 2024 through 2025 school year, and she taught me AP European History. The issue at hand regards a class superlative activity. I would like to bring awareness to the fact that that activity was run entirely by students. Students voted on what superlative should be... They voted on what superlative category there should be, they voted on who should be nominated for each category, and they ultimately voted on who won the category. This was a fun end-of-year activity after the AP exam that Ms. Watts set up to bring fun activity to the classroom. Students had every opportunity to drop out of the activity, whether it was publicly or whether it was privately with Ms. Watts. I would like to bring light to the fact that Ms. Watts has an enormous amount of student support. She had a petition with over 703 signatures signed in less than 24 hours before a cease and desist stopped the petition. There was a peaceful walkout at GHS on August 25th, which showed support from hundreds of students for Ms. Watts. There's been outrage from students, and they have taken social media stating war on Watts and free Ms. Watts due to the unjust accusations against her. I would like to say that Ms. Watts has been one of the best teachers I ever had. She is the most empathetic and kind person I have ever met. She helped me during one of the most difficult times in my life. She always ensured that there was a safe learning environment in her classroom. She strongly advocated against bullying in every way, shape, and form, and she advocated for student mental health every day. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. If I could give you all, if you all would please not clap, so if we would just snap instead of clapping, okay? Ms. Johnson?
Our final two speakers on non-agenda items are Ray Fason and Charity Camps.
Hi, my name is Ray Fason. I'm a site leader at Taban Elementary Custodian, and I'm speaking for all the custodians that's getting underpaid, working second jobs, not being able to be home with their family when they should. I mean, we should have a chance to be able to make the same wages as others and be competitive in the wages, but most of the wages are we're getting underpaid and losing custodians at a high rate. And it's like, it's going on all over. It's not just my school, there's other schools in the county as well. But we would like to be, you know, treated as the rest and make enough money to take care of our families and our kids. And we can't do that if we're not making enough money to do it. Taxes take a lot of our money, and then we have to go on with what we have. But if we can get, you know, a raise where we can be competitive and paid, you know, we would get more custodians and they would stay, because most of them leave because they're not getting paid enough. I had one custodian left last year because he wasn't able to pay his bills and take care of his family, and he had two jobs, and it was killing him. And he was like, he just couldn't do it anymore. He had to go find him another job where he can be able to afford to sustain his household. That's all I had to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Fason.
Good evening. My name is Charity Camps, and I'm a former student of Alachua County Public Schools and a former student of Ms. Watts. In the 7th grade, I was told that I was stupid and I would never go anywhere in life by a teacher. That is grounds for firing. Ms. Watts creates such a welcoming environment for her students and allows them to be themselves and enjoy learning. These superlatives have no mal-intent and should not be configured like they do. In the process of creating an innocent activity to close the end of the year, the students nominate who they would like for the superlatives. Then, by how many times the name was written, it is narrowed down, then voted once again by the students. Does that seem like targeting to you? No. Ms. Watts is a genuine, hard-working, and loving teacher that does not deserve to be oppressed by the situation, the school board, or the state. If you allow her to be removed or her license to be revoked, you will be losing a light that will be hard for you to replace. Know the characters of your teachers and listen to the students who are pleading with you to let this strong Black woman keep her job. Please let's not allow an opinion of one remove a teacher that positively impacts many. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camps. So, that's... You said that was our last non-agenda item speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Do we have... I'm going to wait before I call for the... I'm looking to see where our speakers are in here for agenda items.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have... The one person we have signed up for the public comment for agenda items is Shelby Best, who was not here for the first session.
Okay.
Is Shelby Best in the room? So, we have no other speakers for agenda items.
All right. Thank you. I completely missed the public hearing. It was supposed to be timed certain at 6:30. But Shelby Best, is she here now? Is she's not here?
No, ma'am. And that's the only person signed up for the public hearing.
All right. So, we're going to, since we... The Citizen Speaker is not here who signed up. I'm going to yield to Ms. Terry. We have two items for our public hearing, and I think we are okay as long as we don't start before 6:30. We can start 6:30 later, correct, Ms... So, we are...
Good evening. Tonight, we are... We have three different policies to look at for the public hearing. The first one is 0173, and it's about board officers. And is there any questions or comments on this bylaw?
So, colleagues, have you all had a chance to review the item that was in our binder? There are two policies there that have been presented, or one, 173. And Ms. Terry, would you go ahead and read that purpose and effect for us, please? Just read that into the record, a summary of it?
Amendments clarify when the chair appoints or provides for the selection of all committees, it will be with mutual agreement of the board members, and clarifies that the chair will sign notes, minutes, conveyance, contracts, and other legal documents that have been approved by the board.
Thank you, Ms. Terry. Colleagues, you have any questions, any additions, any comments on this? Okay. You, Mr. Vu? So, thank you for bringing this forward. This was a policy, 173, that I thought seriously needed some expounding or some... To really nail down what are... What is allowable? I think it's... To make it really clear of the powers and the authority that our chair has, whoever the chair is, because the chair does not have... Cannot just act because they're the chair. The chair really, it's prescribed in statute as well as, you know, in a policy what the chair should be. But this is really making it known that the chair can't just appoint people to a committee just because they're the chair, and the chair does not have the authority to put forth things that have not been agreed upon by the majority of the board. We rule by majority, and so that we've had an issue where some things that were done, and I think getting it in here now, making it really clear that not being assumed was needed. All right, next one?
All right. Policy 1128, employment contracts. The amendments clarify that the superintendent is authorized to execute employment contracts upon approval by the board.
Okay. Any... That what's been added has been the approval... Upon approval by the board, that was... That also needed to be done because there were some things that were done recently that it was not... Board did not approve some things. Yes, Ms. Playback?
So, that means that, is it before the superintendent offers them employment, like, offers them a contract? Or is it, let's say, for our finance person that we're hiring, or anybody in the finance board? We know about it before, or we know about it after? It says upon approval of the board. When does that happen?
So, what it will be is, we would offer them a contract, we would offer them employment, but then it comes to the board, to that meeting directly after that contract is approved. So, what we'll do is not only recommend the employment, but then also in the personnel packet, there will be... The contract will be listed there also.
Okay, thank you.
But like in the past, we would be able to have them start working, but we would have that approval by... At the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vu?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, too, and I think it's really important that, you know, we make sure we have this down, that this policy and the previous one works to future-proof the board against anybody who wants to act rogue, because ultimately, yes, any contract does have to come before the board. So, I'm glad we're just offering this clarification for something that should be common sense.
Right, yeah. Would you turn your light off? Okay. Thank you.
And then you will see, like, what we have been making that change in the personnel packet, that we've been adding, if we hire an administrator or a teacher, then we put that contract in the personnel list then also, along with the employment. So, you'll see, if we have someone on there for you to approve for their employment, then we will also have the contract listed on the personnel list.
Okay. You mean, like, if it's other than instructional folks, right? Is that what you're talking about? That would be...
Or even, let's say, an administrator. So, let's say an administrator starts on September 21st. So, at the next board meeting on that personnel packet, it will be the recommendation for hire, and then it will also be the approval of that contract, and it'll have annual contract, and it'll have what the date of that contract will be.
Okay. I think I'm following you. I have...
Okay.
Yes.
Then the next one is policy 5136, and this amendment aligns with H. House Bill 1105, which amends Florida Statute 1006.07, and sets forth the prohibitions for students' use of personally-owned wireless communication devices, or WCDs, for elementary, middle, and high school students, and sets forth the exceptions for all students' use in accordance with the student's IEP 504 or a doctor's note from a licensed physician.
All right. Colleagues, you all have any questions, any feedback for... Ms. Playback, go ahead.
So, I know... I know as a board, we've gotten some communications from parents about clarification, about when a student can use their cell phones at the end of school. And there was an instance when a student missed a bus, the administrator did not let them use their cellphone to contact their parent because they were still on campus. It kind of was a, you know... I personally think that when the bell rings, they should use their phone because school has ended technically. And I know as a board, didn't we say it was after they left campus? But I wonder if we should rethink this, because I think as soon as they're off... As soon as the bell rings, they're done with their instructional time. And if they have to reach a parent, if there's something with their club, and they come in, and the administration is trying to follow what I believe we said was when they're off campus, you could tell me, Dr. Patton, if I'm wrong, but I think this would solve a lot of problems with parents, that knowing that they can reach their child and the child can reach them, because when the bell rings, we're done. I mean, we're done with instructional time, and that was the whole thing about the cellphone policy, is that it interferes with instruction. So, I just need some more clarification on that.
Dr. Patton, you want to respond, or you want Dr. Edwards? Because it was in the code of student conduct.
Yes, so, I'll take a break of this. So, we heard from two parents. They're about 13,000 secondary parents, so I think we have to keep things in proportion. That was in the first two, three days of school. Then two days, we had a principal meeting and just said, let's talk through, because people always want to follow everything correctly. And we said, there's the words that you mentioned earlier, Mr. Vu, common sense, that if the kids were returned back on the bus, they had already spoken to parents on the bus, so certainly when they get back off the bus, they're more than entitled to call their parent. We want them to. Jokingly or not, saying the administrators want the kids to be able to get home, too. So, they, you know, just, I think, in the abundance of caution is why we heard from those two parents. But I think when you keep in proportionality to 13,000 kids, and again, we had had three middle schools that last year had already been doing this, right as we have, they are very appreciative to not go backwards on what it was. So, I agree that that did happen, but again, two of 13,000 on a daily basis, not just one time. So, I think it's working. We just asked the principals again. We had them last Tuesday, went through with them and the assistant principals, because they are the boots on the grounds to hear what's going on.
Mr. Vu, I see your light...
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Patton. Like, I'm hearing member Playback's concerns, and I don't think that the policy needs to be changed to address those. I think that's, again, like, a common sense thing. Hey, if you need to arrange transportation, that's a perfectly valid use at the end of the school day to contact a parent or text a parent, because like, I still agree that if you're on our campuses and you're in elementary and middle school, you should not be using your cellphone, because that's internet access on a device that, for statistically speaking, most kids have no filters on them. So, I'd rather them not be on TikTok. Oh, TikTok, I keep saying that. Oh, my God, I'm so old. TikTok, or any type of like, social media, or even just, you know, coordinating where students are doing things they shouldn't be doing on campus. And so, you know, I still like the policy as is, and if anything, I, you know, like, in my conversations with superintendent, I still want it to be stricter. I would love the prohibition to extend to high school, but I do understand that there is some varying interpretation of whether or not state statute would actually allow that, but ultimately, that's where I'd like to go. I don't see a purpose now for cell phones in our classrooms at all, considering we have one-to-one devices.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna wait and see. Let's see how this goes before we say no, no cell phones at all, because really, some... You also got to realize, the statute is not just for Alachua County, and so there's some counties where they don't have one-to-one devices, and they... The students may be using them, and then there may be some teachers who really have structured time around and ways in how students are using their devices. So, I don't know. I think we go with what we have, what's in the code of student conduct and the current policy, and then if we notice that, and we get a lot of feedback from, you know, teachers and parents, and we consider that, and maybe we modify them, but I don't know. Another bite of the apple. I'm gonna let you have another bite. Go ahead.
And I do just want to clarify that, too. I think it goes beyond instruction. I think it... I just want to speak specifically to how damaging it is for especially young children to have devices like this, where, again, it's just instant access to dopamine. And again, I'm going to credit Dr. Edwards for truly opening up my eyes to this and making me see it and observing it in myself, and that we are ultimately training kids to be addicts. And I think it was one of the biggest problems we have in our schools is this need to just always think of my cellphone, my cellphone, my cellphone. You see behaviors now to where if you even threaten to take a cellphone away from some kids, they really act out, and it's behavior you will see is the same in like, drug users, right? And I'm not saying it's the same proportionality in terms of like, behavior or issues, but it's very similar. And I'd rather it's just nip it in the bud. It does not have it be an issue in our schools where kids learn that once they're on our campus, they don't have access to this, and it needs to be put away, not used. And so, I am aware that for other districts, they may not have the same access to one-to-one, but at least for our district, that we do. And again, I am totally okay with just not having cell phones at all in our schools. But, yeah, and that's just me.
So, okay. Dr. McNeely, Ms. Playback, is your light on? Did you leave it on? Okay. So, Dr. McNeely, go ahead now, I'll come back to you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I tend to have to disagree with my colleague, Thomas Vu, on this one, especially in consideration of everything that I'm seeing in the news. Minneapolis, I may have mispronounced that state, but you know what I'm talking about most recently. I can agree with you, Mr. Vu, for definitely elementary and middle, but high school, I'm not going to... Vu, for definitely elementary and middle, but high school, I'm not going to sit well with that one. I think inasmuch that we were notified with what colleague Playback was stating, I read it, I understood, but I could not gather myself to realize what the administration had said, or counselor, I'm not sure. We have too many emails coming in right now, but I'm not sure who directed the student to a no. Some of our adults in our high schools probably need to have their cell phones rescinded as well, but I'm talking about emergencies. And that was certainly an emergency with that parent for that particular student. I don't know where we go in this day and time, and we don't lift these things up. And so unfortunately, I'm addicted, as well as some of our students, but I do not want to take away the opportunity or the privilege, especially when we've seen so many emergencies throughout the nation. So I'm holding fast to that, and if Madam Chair says we will hold and come back and have more discussion, I'm all for that as well. But as of tonight, the policy where our high school students, or whatever, deem it necessary, I hope that we will keep that intact. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Playback, I recognize.
Well, I'm in the classroom now, and I teach high school. And I'm very happy when the first bell rings, and the kids put their phone away all day. We allow them 30 minutes at lunch, and they can have them again at the end of school. It's not our job to be the parent. It is our job to teach them. And I think that the parameters that are set, I agree with Dr. McNeely about safety, but these kids have adjusted very, very well, especially in high school. And I think as soon as that bell rings, when they're done, we are done for instructional time. And if they're going to get on TikTok, they're going to get on TikTok no matter where they are, whether they're on our campus or not. And that's, you know, I believe the state law, and Dr. Edwards can tell me differently, isn't it regards to instructional time, that the cell phones are not supposed to be used for instructional time, during instructional time?
For our elementary and middle school students, it is not while they're on campus throughout the school day.
Okay.
For our high school students, it is not during their instructional time. The law also, however, permits for school districts to make decisions to be more strict if, say, they so desire.
Okay. So I'm just speaking about high school, because I'm not on, you know, elementary. And I would like, over the course of the year, Madam Chair, to, to track how many cellphone referrals are actually given out in high school during the course, to see if it is in correlation to during instructional time, if they really are not, you know, and afterwards, before or after, when they're on campus, just to see if it's working or it's not working, as far as the high school. I understand elementary and middle, but I'm just, you know, we're talking kids 18 years old, getting ready to go to college, and here we are. I think instructional time is a whole different thing as regards to when school starts.
Well, I think that's what our policy is, and it is, it's bell-to-bell, unless in high school, unless the teacher says that they can use it.
For an instructional...
For instructional purposes. That is, that's what...
I thought I heard Mr. Vu say that he didn't want them to...
No, no, that's what he said he didn't want, but that's not what's in our policy, and that's not what's in the Code of Student Conduct. That's not, that's...
For the high school.
Right. We're, that's, that's his personal preference, but that's not what, that's not what this is.
Okay.
I do want to make one correction, though, because at the end, we did initially begin with bell-to-bell. That's where the policy was, but actually, in the procedures that we have for this current school year, it is departure from campus.
That's what I thought.
So that was where the conversation. So that's important distinction, as you all are having a discussion.
So departure from campus, so what if they are on campus for practice or something? They may not be departing. So that, to me, that goes bell-to-bell, that once the school day is in, however, they would leave campus. If it's by car, if it's walking, or whatever, then they can use their phone. They can use their phone.
So, right. So it's extracurricular activities. Dr. Edwards just didn't mention that. So it's anybody, when they have extracurricular activities, they are welcome to use their phones for whatever they need. Well, she's, you want to correct yourself, Dr. Edwards?
Well, if we need to change, we may need to be...
Add to what I said, I don't know. So, yes, so we did have discussion about those students who are involved in extracurricular activities, being able to participate. We also know that there are particular rules for EDEP. And so what happens after the school bell rings is a concern that did come up, and we had the discussion, and it was determined for our school district that we would go until students departed from campus. I think particularly that is impactful for those students who are riding the bus home, not for the students who are participating in extracurricular activities. So those students, it would be likened to kids who are in high school in the instructional space, where they have a person who allows for them to be able to use their phone during that time. But for those students who might be on a school bus and they're riding home, we said that, hey, up until the time that they, that not just when the bell rang, but when they, until they left from campus, they're not to use the phone. When they are on the bus riding to school, they can use their phone. When they get on campus, it has to be off and away for all grade levels. So it is different for elementary and middle school than it is for high school. But our policy does not vary much from what already existed for Alachua County Public Schools. It is very similar to what already existed off and away, was always the expectation. I think what we have done is clarified what that looks like across the school district, and provided procedures so that everybody is operating the same across the board.
Okay, so one scenario, I'm not going to belabor this, but right after school, kids get ready for cheer practice, they've gone to the bathroom, they've changed, they come out of cheer, to cheer practice on their phone, taking pictures, they're still on campus. Are they allowed to be doing that according to our policy, because they're still on campus?
Yes.
It's part B and C that's on the policy. It's written there that they're allowed to do that. I'm just, I was just stating my own opinion that I would like it to be stricter, but here it's on part B and C, yes.
I'm not sure what's happening, but I know that we have gone through this with our principals and APs ad nauseam. That's why it's working right now, because everybody is on the same page. It's extracurricular activities, they can use their phones.
You'll see at the top of page four.
Minus the elementary's EDEPs.
B and C.
All right. So I need a motion for us to accept these three policy revisions and move them forward. Second. Okay, motion by Mr. Vu, second by Dr. McNeely. And we've already called for our citizen input. Did miss, did the person come? Okay. And we've had good board discussion. If there's anything else that come up, please let Dr. Patton and Ms. Terry know, so, and they can bring that back at the next hearing. So all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion passes four zero. Thank you, Ms. Terry. So I am like thumbing, because I must have gotten my agenda mixed up. But anyway, my public comment is in the middle, and then...
You switched some pages.
I don't know what I did. Well, there's some, some...
Next would be approval.
Yeah, I'm looking here. I got two sevens and eights, so I must got some pages mixed up. All right, so we have next approval of our regular school board, our workshop minutes for August 13th, 2013. Is there a motion? Is there a second? So moved by Mr. Vu, second by Ms. Playback. Any board discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of adopting the minutes as presented for the workshop? Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion passes four zero. Motion to approve the regular school board meeting, school board meeting minutes for August 19th, 2025? Moved by Mr. Vu, second by Dr. McNeely. Any board discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion passes four zero. Now we're at our consent agenda. Is there a motion to, we approve the consent agenda items, one through three, and then five, six, seven?
Six was pulled.
Six was pulled, five, seven, or seven through twelve. Is there a second? Second by, a motion by Dr., by Mr. Vu, second by Ms. Playback, I heard. So any board discussion? Aye. Okay, Mr. Vu. All right, you have...
Yeah, I have a question.
Which one?
For Dr. Patton. It's for number 12.
Employment? Employment one?
Yes.
Okay, let me open that back up. Dr. Patton, we have, or you want to answer to, ask it to Ms. Terry, possibly?
I can just ask her. I can adults being of Dr. Patton. And so it's just about the transfer, and I know we're just, it's just about a supervisor from one department to another, but it was a transfer into a position that I thought that we were closing, and I'm seeing that we haven't. And so I'm just curious of whether or not we are then closing a different supervising position for Title I, as opposed to the supervisor in professional development. Because I didn't realize we were rehiring for that after we transferred the previous person who had occupied it just a month ago into a school. That'd be the administrative transfer, the very first one. Yeah, it's just Attachment A, page one, it's the very first box, administrative transfers.
So that's, okay, all right. Let me make sure I'm on the right meeting. I'm on the wrong meeting. It wasn't in my binder, that's why I'm having to look online, so.
You have that one? If not, Mrs. Dr. H. can get it. So Dr. H., sorry, thanks.
That individual that transferred to the assistant principal position at Eastside High School, that was an open position at Eastside, which then created the vacancy in the professional learning department. Is that your question?
Yes, but I was given the impression, at least with my conversation with Dr. Patton, that we weren't going to fill this role. It was just going to be, it was going to be one of the cuts we were making ultimately, considering that we staffed PD with someone above a director. And so I was just curious then, if we were, if now that we're transferring somebody into this role that I thought was cut, are we then just cutting the supervisor one role that this person originated from? Or are we also then filling that?
So to my knowledge, we were not cutting that one, because there was a person in it when we were doing the budget cut, so maybe I might have misunderstood that question when I talked to you about it.
It was more after the, so after the person in this supervisor one role was transferred, and, you know, from what you told me, that it really wasn't by choice, out of this role, that we weren't going to fill it, that it was going to be just an additional cut we were making. And now I see that we are filling the role, so I'm just...
Mrs. Terry, can, $20 million worth of a lot of things I might have, do you know that back one, round one? Sorry.
I'm not sure on that one.
I recall this would be in one that was cut, but I've not...
Yeah, I don't, I didn't either.
Yeah, it was not one that initially discussed last school year in the spring. It was something more discussed very recently, in August.
All of us, or with you?
No, but just me. Okay.
I don't know. To tell you the truth, it's...
Okay.
I thought we were filling it, so maybe I was talking about something differently. Mrs. Harper, does that ring a bell to you? We were still filling that position, correct? That's what I understood. So I don't know what I must have told you. I'm sorry, Mr. Vu, that it's not, not a position that I knew we were cutting. We just, that opening happened, and we're definitely, because we had eliminated so many within that department, that is why, because it really only leaves two people there.
I guess then it's a situation to where we have two transfers and a hire, instead of just one hire, is kind of now the situation we're finding ourselves in, and that's, I guess I'll ask you more about that in our weekly meeting.
Yeah, I'll go back on that and be ready for it. But there were only, there were only two. When we were done with our eliminations, it left only two in that staff, so cutting one more was not on the radar, so I don't know how that, if I said that, then that was my bad.
So if, Ms. Green, if you have a copy of that, would you, can I get a copy of this right here? Because that wasn't in my binder when I picked it up, and it wasn't on my desk, of the personnel one?
Consent 12, yeah.
I have, I have...
Yeah, it wasn't in the original binder, so...
Okay, I'm, that's what... I don't, I don't have a copy.
Ms. Green, I think has one in the very back of that stack.
I was, I just wanted it so I could have it when I can compare, compare it to the, thank you, thank you. And so along, thank you, Dr. Edwards. Along the lines of this, Dr. Patton, if I could, would you, if you would please give us an updated copy of the organization chart, and that will help me with... Okay. All right, there's no other discussion on this, on the consent agenda items. We've already had a motion, and it been second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? So my, my issue, when I get my binder, and I, I really want to like, not, you guys, I like, I read my binder, right? I get it, and I usually mark it up. So if something like changes on it, and we're getting like, to Dr. McNeely's credit, we're getting like gazillion emails. Anything that's emailed to me, I probably missed it, if you don't like tell it to me. And I talked with Dr. Patton on Sunday about, we went over the binder, and I didn't even think to ask her that there's no agenda, I mean, no HR thing, because it wasn't any on the agenda, so I didn't even ask her. But I actually, every piece of paper that I get from this, from these folks around here, I look at it. And so when I get something, I come to the dais, and it's here, it really throws me off. I guess, I don't know if I got ADHD or something, but because I've had notes and I've marked and all, but I'm super organized, and I'm like, I really follow things through, right? And so when I get something, I just want to apologize, y'all, when I get something and it's outside of my routine, it really throws me for a loop. It really does. So I think that's why I'm always like kind of advocating for the kids, like saying, we be expecting our kids, grown, kids to act like grownups, when some grownups can't even keep it together, and I'm, I'm one of the some grownups, is what...
Maybe we should say, ask Ms. Green to make sure it's updated for us by Monday?
Or, no, just tell me. Like, don't, don't like email me and just expect me to think, because that doesn't work for me. It doesn't. It does not work for me. And I am very diligent about preparing myself for these meetings, whether or not I'm sitting down there or right here. So, all right, with that, action item one, which is the number four, the old consent agenda item number four, the security camera thing. So Chief Pelton is at the lectern. Thank you, Chief Pelton.
Yes, ma'am. Vice Chair certain, Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Patton. The Superintendent recommends the adoption of the school surveillance camera system access agreement as presented.
Okay, is there a motion? Moved by Dr. McNeely, second by Mr. Vu. So I actually pulled this, because this is really like, won't get all into it because of safety and security, but I did have a lot of questions for Chief Pelton and Dr. Anuzi, and they kind of got to me. There's just one thing on here that I still, I'm stuck on, and that is the year. The time span for this contract, or this agreement between us is five years, or four and a half years, so August 1, 2030. And I, I, I would actually like to modify this, the motion to do that, to, for us to change this down to like a two-year period, the 27, and we see how this goes. So I'd like to amend the motion, and I just think we, we need to look at that before we just go way out. we, we need to look at that before we just go way out, so, move that we...
Oh, I, I have a question, um, just, as to the two, are you just, there's some misgivings about maybe just like how it actually plays out, because my understanding was generally most districts have agreements like this, and that the actions we're permitting here were more or less already being done, this just formalizes it, you know, in a contract.
Is that so? I, I think this is a little bit more expanded, um, access, is my understanding.
So, I think what happens in, Chief, you can feel free to modify my words if I'm not correct, so we operate on some here in the county that don't even have a timeline, which gives us a little bit of heart palpitations done before Chief was here, done before I was here, so I, I think that that's to, to Mrs. Surtin's credit, you should, I don't think open-ended with no date is ever good, I think that it can go anywhere between two and five years, I think things like this are more five years because of the fact that what's built in are two different key things here, one is that at any time, we can decide that we do not want to do this anymore, we drive that ship, it's not that the police drive the ship, and then more importantly, that we have, um, the ability to audit this as much as we want, it's not some, on somebody else, so we want to take a weekly look at this for the first couple of months, just to see what do we have, and remembering too, this is only for emergencies and only for the Gainesville Police Department because of, and I'm sorry, Chief, one more time, what's the name of the, the, the organ...
Criminals, something, um...
Thank you, real-time crime scene.
Real-time crimes.
So, it is specific, that is why it's not available at ASO and the other different departments, you know, so it's a very specific, specific, um, group that's asked, I'm sure probably others will come along board when they see that, because it's only able to help for a true emergency, not to monitor kids.
All right, so, um, Ms. Playback.
For the people that are viewing us, and for me also, could you just give me a brief overview how this works, and where the cameras are located, and...
Can't talk about where the cameras are located.
Oh, you can't do that.
That's executive session.
But, okay, you can't talk about that, but, are they on campus?
Yes.
They're on campus?
Yes.
In a designated area?
Yes.
Areas, okay, so every school in the district?
Yes.
Okay.
I think our concern, and why we're grateful that they have this real-time crime center, is that heaven help it, something happens, people that are not at the school site, that are working the scene, someone that can be very calm, very, you know, they're not in the height, their blood pressure's not up, they're able to watch and monitor from afar and have a different interaction than the folks that are on campus as it's happening, as we talked with our principals, like, if, again, hopefully nothing ever does happen, but if we ever got to the point where we need a reunification center, the principal would be over with the command center, but the assistant principals would not be the leads at the reunification center, their blood pressure's up, they might have seen some very traumatic things, so we need those calm district people that were not interacting, a similar sense here, people that are not in the middle of that emergency are able to then snap on cameras and be able to help see things a little bit differently, because they're not caught up in the moment, that we're still, no matter how much you practice something, it elevates you and gets, um, things moving, so I think that's why we're grateful that you guys have something like this, to be honest, and it's for everyone, so whether it's a situation in High Springs, you're still able to help us from over there.
All right, I don't see any more lights, okay, thank you, Chief Pelton, is, is there any other board discussion or questions or anything? Okay, see none, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
What's that with your modification, because you didn't put that forward?
Um, I, I did, but it, we're just, I'll just, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go with what it is, um, I'm not sure if the cancellation of 30-day notice will come from the board asking that, if we're not pleased with that, or if that comes from staff, from the board? Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure, all right, thank you, I, I, before zero, I guess, so...
But, Mrs. Surtin, rest assured, we'll, we'll get with you for a couple of months every week, just so that you feel better, and we feel better, not just you, we feel better too.
You know, I, as, as I said to you guys when we were, before the meeting, you know, we want, I want, believe in law enforcement having every tool and the, that they can possibly have in case there's an emergency, but I do think things like this, the over-surveillance and misusing and the guardrails needing to be there, I, I stand by that, and, and so I'm hoping that I'm, that nothing goes off or pops off that's inappropriate, you know, that, I, I'm just gonna tell you guys, I, my, my biggest concern was this being used inappropriately, or being used to, um, case up kids for things that happen outside of school, that, that's a big concern of mine, and, and it being used just to over-surveil and over, you know, students and staff, and I don't, I don't think we want people to just be so uptight that they're always being watched, or whatever they are, but that's just a big question that I had, I don't want this to be misused, um, to target students or staff inappropriately. Um, Ms. Playback, your light's on.
Um, I feel that they're professionals, and this is their job, and I have trust that they would not do that, because that's what you do, and that's, we leave it to you, and I'm very comfortable with that, so, thank you, thank you for watching out for our students if we ever need you, thank you.
So, so it's not that I don't trust them, and I don't appreciate the work they do, because I want to make that clear, let's make that clear right now, right? But, but sometimes there are some people that do things inappropriately, and, and because I say that, it's, it's like, like what I do professionally, when I worked, accountants and auditing, when they go in and they review, it's not they don't trust people, but they just verify, it's trust but verify, and, and we have guardrails, and you have internal controls to prevent things from happening, but sometimes at your best, things still happen, and so the questions that I had to Chief Pelton and those earlier were just expressing some concerns that I had, law enforcement, my husband was law enforcement, I have the utmost respect for law enforcement, but, hey, law enforcement, sometimes have done things that's not, haven't been right, so, that's, that's not a contamination of everybody on indictment, but it's not an unfounded concern, and I see we have an officer, say, I don't, I can't think of your name, so, but you're recognized, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Major Jamie Kurnick, I work at the Gainesville Police Department, I'm over the Operations Division, I did attend Defensive Tactics Instructor School with your husband in 2002, so we are...
A long time ago.
Yes, ma'am, and so our real-time crime center, we have businesses and other places that allow us access to their cameras in emergency circumstances, we would be willing, if the school board wanted to come to the police department to see our real-time crime center, we would afford that opportunity, could, you can see how we utilize the cameras and for what reasons, and of course, we have strict policies and guidelines about how those cameras and things can be used, and so, we are the, to my knowledge, the only agency in the area that has one of these, we looked at models across the state and across the nation, and this is where technology is going in order to better respond and prepare for critical incidents.
Thank you, so, you know, I listen to too much NPR, and, you know, with the facial recognition and the AI and stuff, there is bias in that, you know, they're, they're coming, they're showing that, I'm serious, this is like a thing, even in medical, like my daughter is, um, in her profession, like in pharmacy, they can like do reviews and stuff, and they're coming up, it's not always right, you know, it, there is some bias, you got people building the algorithm, building the algorithm and feeding it data, so, I'm just saying, but thank you all for your service, and I will probably take you guys up, I think I've seen that, that, that area in there when I came for one of those meetings on a Thursday, but thank you all for coming, and thank you for your work with us, and, and Chief. All right, so we have our second, um, action item, the testing thing, and Mr. Shonut's already there, ready?
Good evening, Vice Chair Surtin, members of the board, Superintendent Patton, the superintendent recommends the board adopt the 25-26 Uniform Assessment Calendar for Alachia County Public Schools.
Is there a motion?
No.
The second, move by Mr. Vu, second by Dr. McNeely, so now we're ready, Dr. McNeely, you pulled this item, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Shonut, I ask for this consent agenda to be pulled for action, and my question is, one of the questions that I have, because I've been contacted, I would not have known everything that's going on in different schools, but I'm talking elementary now, all right, so, the state window for elementary or for all testing was May 1st through the 29th, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, for the State Progress Monitoring III, which is what's used for the state accountability school grading system, the calendar window for DOE for states, for districts is May 1st, which is a Friday, until May 29th, which is a Friday.
Okay, when did we actually do the progress monitoring III for elementary during that period?
We did not do any, are you talking about for this past spring that just ended?
Yeah, the...
Yes, ma'am, we did not have any testing that first week, there was initially some testing that was scheduled for that day...
That's what I thought.
But it was encouraged, schools were encouraged to push that back, and so there was no testing, especially the third, fourth, and you mentioned elementary, especially for third, fourth, and fifth grade, to try to push that as a little bit later on in the window to allow for more instructional time.
Do you have a particular date, Mr. Shonut, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, you probably don't have the exact date that that test was given, however, I am asking that from here on out, when we look at the state window of time, and then we make decisions for the district, I'm asking for the longest amount of time, because we need for our, especially in mathematics, we need those teachers to be able to review and continue to instruct, if we expect our school grades to continue to go up, then teachers need as much time as possible, and that's what I'm asking for from here on out, that we have, um, the last amount of time, in other words, if the test was administered at the beginning of the month, and the window for the state was the 29th, I'm hoping that we would be able to consider later in that timeframe, so that teachers will have that ability to do what's necessary, especially in mathematics, now, for your, hold on...
They've already set the date.
Yeah, the date, well, this is not for, oh, you're meaning for this year, okay, I, then, since colleague Playback says the date has already been set, then I'm going to ask for the leadership to go back and relook at that, because that's not giving enough time for all of the things that need to be done, and I'm sure that the superintendent is going to tap me on my shoulder and say, all errors need to be aligned, but some schools need to have, it's, I, I hate to use, it's not a one-size-fits-all, but I'm talking to the superintendent as well as the leadership who makes these decisions, and sometimes we need to have a teacher or several teachers involved where you can hear, I know that you have stated that administration were in meetings, secondary, middle, and high, but elementary might have been doing a U-fly or something during that period of time, I would ask that from here on out, that we have representation from staff, a variety of staff, and listen to different aspects of this.
Yes, ma'am.
As a former teacher, I'm requesting that, because I know what it takes for getting all of our students ready, geared up, and, and ready to go, and because sometimes we designate one day or whatever, and it could be early in the month, and not at the end like the state is giving that window of time, I'm asking that we consider that from here on out.
Dr. McNeely, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, I'm, I'm looking here at the, if...
I don't have here.
Okay, so I was looking at the page eight of this, and that's where it looks like PM 3 for elementary is, right? So I was looking in the state window, it says for the LA is April 13th to May 29th.
So, we're, we don't jump right on it.
Yeah, we, and so then, that's the state window, and it looks like our district window starts May 4th to May 8th.
I'm looking at the mathematics, um...
Okay, but, yeah, so you said, you said, I thought you said LA, and I was gonna get down to math, so then the math, it looks like great, it starts from, um, the state is May 1st to May 29th, as Mr. Shonut said, and then it looks like our district window is picking up, depending on the grade, is May 12th to May 21, so my question is to Mr. Shonut, is the schools can set a date within that time, and they can look at their pacing calendars and what they've completed to pick a date, as long as it falls in that window, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. McNeely, so, a, a few things if I may.
Yes.
The, the dates certainly were considered, we did not begin testing on the first possible date for the state window, which is a Friday, to be honest with you, typically the input from both teachers and administrators is testing on Mondays and Fridays, you tend to have more absences, as, as the board is well aware, in the community, we are now back to having early release Wednesdays, every Wednesday, and so that's also a little bit of a challenge, because that means in theory, the, the state allows students to work to the end of the school day on, on those state assessments, so if we're releasing early on a Wednesday, then some students are losing potentially an hour, 20 minutes of, if they needed that time, of course, that extra time, so that was considered, so we, we aren't testing on the very first day, Dr. McNeely, because it is that, a Friday of the first, the very last week in May, Monday is the Memorial Day holiday, the 25th, and effectively that last week is really the last full week of school for all of Alachia County Public Schools, I believe the last day is June 2nd, so it goes like a day or two into the next week, and so, again, based on the feedback from both administrators, and when I say teachers, it's, it's anecdotal, I, I want to be clear, there wasn't a survey or anything that was formally sent out, but that last week of school is already full of ceremonies, events, field trips, all kinds of things, and is really not necessarily what I, I think most people would believe is...
Testings.
Very conducive to having high-stakes testing at that time, so unfortunately, it knocks out that window, the first full week, Dr. McNeely, in Mar, uh, May, excuse me, which would go from May 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th, the only groups that are testing during that, what would be the first full week in May, are first grade, kindergarten, and second, and again, the, those, the grades are very important, but those grades are not necessarily at the, the same school accountability level as far as school grades and the accountability system, and the other factor is, ma'am, the elementary schools, and you, you know this, have to be able to give those tests, they have to have the test administrators, the, all of the accommodations...
And don't those, aren't those tests online or whatever, and you get immediate feedback? That is my understanding, that I was told.
Ninety-nine percent of that.
So, you don't have to, you don't have to wait for, um, information to come back, because you can get that immediately.
Typically, the department has it on for the schools to look, usually within 24 hours, it may take, I believe, three days for it now to move to the parent portal, because the state shortened the amount of time for that to have access, but the schools, the, the administrators can have access to how those students performed immediately, so none of the third, fourth, and fifth graders begin their testing until at the earliest May 12th, which is, again, now there's two weeks in May, if you take out the first full one and the last one with Memorial Day and those holidays, and so, if I, so to answer Doc., uh, Ms. Surtin's question, the district is providing specific days and windows of when those tests are, so it's not that the, for this year, that a school can just pick any day within that two-week window, we are trying to standardize that, and that's also so that the district can provide additional support for testing and things on our end, but Dr. McNeely, one last thing I, I did want to say is that during, in April, we, in both the pr-... both the principal and the assistant principal meetings in April, my office, Mr. Sweeney and I met with the principals and APs at the meetings, and we already broke into small groups and began the process of sort of talking about this and getting input directly from them. You are correct, we did have a meeting for school-based administrators at Lincoln, I believe it was the first week in July after the fourth holiday, and there were breakout groups, and we did have high schools. I took the high school principals and administrators, Mr. Sweeney took the middle, and even further dove into this situation. But the elementary were doing a very important U-Fly training as well. But we've tried to communicate with principal reps, a variety of others, and it's something that we've dealt a lot with in doing that.
So a couple of comments, if you don't mind, real quick. So, one, the testing calendar you approved this time last year was very pushed up. So when we got ahold of it and we looked at it in March, we started talking to the principals because they were testing, like, right the beginning of May, and we were like, "Absolutely not, not for tested grade levels." So we went back through, and then actually, in April, Mr. Shelnut, if you remember, at the principal meeting, we spent almost an hour and a half in breakout sessions by middle school, high school, and that, because I think you all remember our concern that had happened right after spring break, and we started the ACT testing, and we had computers that weren't adjusted and all that. That's what really illuminated the problem with our testing calendar so that we would not be in this position this year. So also, just for the average people that may not know, in the elementary school, you have less sets of hands in the building to help with testing. So you don't have the advantage that you could at other schools that have more people in them or more folks that have it. So you, you still need to allow one-on-ones, one-on-small groups for K to 2, so they try and get the non-state-tested folks done first, so all hands are on deck for later in the month to accommodate exactly, Dr. McNeely, what you said, that the longer window, especially for the state, the accountability grades, the 3, 4, 5. So that's, it's a combination of a lot of those things. And then here, too, because we have the early release Wednesday, the number-one request from all the administrators were to try and avoid Monday, Friday, and then elementary, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So you're down to Tuesdays and Thursdays. But they did a really good job. I mean, and then they came back around, like you mentioned, and then when they were doing U-Fly, we came back around and did a virtual one to get the second round of input from elementary principals. So we were very appreciative, not that, not that we had to make all those changes from last year, but appreciative of people's time, and they had gone back and also spoken to grade-level chairs from elementary, department chairs, so had a voice from the teachers also.
Mr. Shelnut, so just for clarity, then, so the window that we have for that elementary that Dr. McNeely is concerned about, so if you have that two-week, who's picking the date? Is it the principal, or are you picking the date?
Yes, ma'am. That date was picked collectively by the district. We met as an entire curriculum department and tried to go through and, and look at the dates and the calendars and other requirements.
So specifically, in that two-week period, who picks the one day for that, let's say, Oakview or, or Ottawa? Who picks the day of the testing within that two-week window?
Yes, ma'am. The, the, the schools were provided with a date that, that individual, that they were supposed to be testing. So as an example, third-grade ELA is May 21st.
Okay, so...
So the schools were provided that, that was the day to do that.
So the district picked the day approved by the principals. That's the part B that isn't there.
Okay, so we have the window, but we don't know the exact date.
Yes, we do.
Well, I don't know.
Well, right. Because it'll get handed out later in the year, but we can't, these are the windows within, that's...
I don't know that, at the end of that, when testing, we just, it doesn't show us that, so that's good.
And, and the reason, I'm sorry, Mr. Shelnut, but I'm very passionate about this because I stepped into a real mess, to be honest, and it took a lot for us to get this cleared up and get it to this point. So when I watched what I watched, we had principals that were choosing Mondays, Fridays, three-day gaps between makeups from other kids because they were allowed to choose that. And that's why we said this year, "No, we need to help guide them. They're doing a million things." So we can get their collective input upfront, which is what we did, two meetings, then the district came back and said, "Okay, these are our suggested dates." Then we took it back to the principals to say, "What about these dates?" So enormous amount of time, and I feel a lot more confident this year than where we started at in, like, March.
Mr. Shelnut and Superintendent Patton, thank you so much for your explanation. I will talk to the superintendent even more so, even though the dates have been set, but I certainly want to have and see more school decisions in this. And I'd even ask you or the leadership team, how many of our elementary principals voted for, I'd like to know the numbers. I really would, and that's being almost petty, but at this point, when we get calls and, and comments from instructional staff, I have to come and bring it to you and the team. Thank you.
You know, you have something else, Mr. Voo?
I haven't said anything yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I just...
I'm sorry, it was all on there, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, you're good, you're good. I, I just want to give my own perspective as the person who used to oversee this in the district, actually. So for elementary, I, I'm seeing how, like, to me, it makes a lot of sense because it's actually incredibly difficult to get kindergartners, first graders logged into the Star Renaissance testing platform just by virtue of their kindergartners and first graders, right? So I see why getting them earlier in the window works, especially because it's not for accountability, K through 2. And then I'm seeing here, if we're having grade-three ELA on the last, or toward the end of the window, the district window, that really works for me as well. It's giving instructors as much time as possible, but then still providing a time for makeups because I know we've had issues in this district, you know, in the past few years to where schools haven't issued grades because there's a 95% rule. So we have to test 95% of the required tests by the state to be issued a school grade. And so to me, May 22nd, May 21st, the very last possible date, you could give a primary testing date to then still accommodate makeups to meet that because, as we all know, there are tons of students who will know testing is coming up and just be sick, or sick, or just some other reason not to show up. And so the, the district's job is to basically test them whenever they come to school next. And it's mandatory, it's state law, there are no state testing opt-outs. Again, the, the state provides no mechanism with which a student can opt out of a state test for accountability. And so, you know, for the most part, I agree with it. Maybe the one thing I would have issues with are the EOC window. It is earlier, but I can see to where schools are very much trying to focus on making sure, "Hey, grade 10, grade 3, grades, you know, whatever, ELA, math, are prioritized." And so, you know, that's just my two cents on it.
Madam Chair, can I say one quick thing, ma'am? Thank you, ma'am. And I thank you for that, Mr. Voo. And I will also say, especially with the high schools, it is infinitely more complicated because they also have Cambridge testing, AP testing, and IB testing. And so, a lot of times, you may want to have it ideal on a day, but if you're going to have a third of your sophomore class out taking another exam that there is no makeup day for, that leads to a lot of, of challenges. And so the high schools have to be incredibly flexible. And so sometimes, sir, that's the reason why it might be a little bit earlier, but that's likely due to those other conflicts of those state tests, or national tests, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. I know high schools are very complicated, puzzleable in so many different ways, so yes.
So, um, thank you all for that feedback and the discussion on that. I, I'm not going to have too much to say, other than the alignment, I think, is good and for us to really have the direction and letting our superintendent and her team really work on operationalizing that and really getting it kind of standardized. Because with everybody, every school will want to do what they want to do, but that really hasn't gotten us good results overall for everybody. So I think kind of standardizing and, and really trying to get some alignment does help us as an organization. But nobody likes testing, including, you know, the high-stakes testing. I think we all need the evaluation, but just there's so much riding on it, it just makes it difficult, so. All right, seeing there's no other discussion, we're ready to vote. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Uh, Dr. McNeely, did you vote? You good? Okay, 4-0, okay. All right, so let me go, that, that's all that we have for action items. We will now add our agenda. We have ACA announcements, or, I mean, updates. Um, so they left, all right?
They gave them public comment.
They did a public comment. We'll now move to board members, superintendent announcements. Mr., um, okay, Dr. McNeely?
I'm so sorry. Ms. Ward will be right back in, they said, that she stepped out for just a moment.
Well, um, she'll have to wait till after we get done, if she comes back. Go ahead, I'm Dr. McNeely. I'm not, I'm not waiting on her, so.
Madam Chair, thank you. I wanted to give a big thank you to the Elatra County Retired Educators Association for all that they did for Metcalf Elementary. All of the donations and contributions went to that school this year. Every single beginning of a school year, the Elatra County Retired Educators Association does this very thing that they did at Metcalf. So I wanted to publicly thank the organization for the generosity and the thoughts and the resources that you embedded into that gifting to Metcalf. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Anyone else? Okay, so before, I have a couple announcements I'd like to make. So you all are probably aware, on, from the State Board of Education meeting, we, myself and Dr. Rockwell attended, Dr. Rockwell virtually, myself in person in St. Augustine, we had a, quite a discussion with, with the governor appointees, I'm going to leave it like that, okay? The, from the education commissioner on down to the Board of Education. We, we got us, we, we got a, we had a, had a quite a meeting. I think they searched very hard to find a couple of video clips to fit into the narrative of the letter that was sent to us or sent to Dr. Rockwell. We had good support from citizens from Elatra County going to speak on behalf of what happened in that meeting. I asked, and I want to thank the staff for responding to me. They helped me to find the date or gave me the date of the second clip. So I had the first clip, which was April 2nd, 2024, that they showed. And then they had the clip from 9/21, that, the 9/21 was when you were chair, Dr. McNeely, of, of 21. And it's really odd, like, I was able to go back, and I knew specifically when Dr., when I got the, the clip from the 24, because I had it in my notebook, but today, when Ms. Green, she, and Ms. Peck helped me with that second clip, I can't believe I didn't have anything written down. I had a tab on the page, but I ain't even have the guy's name written down, which is so unlike me. I mean, if you, if I show, if I'd have bought the book yet, I should have bought it, let you guys see it. You saw the meeting before, I had all the citizens that commented and what they talked about, but that day I had nothing written. I mean, I had stuff written, but not about the citizen input, which is really odd, I don't know why. But anyway, so we have this order that was given. I'm of the opinion that the order was pre-written before we got there and said a word, based on the time that it was sent. I left there, we were finished with our part, we left shortly after, and they, they took a recess and we got out. And the order was dated, and the time on it, I don't know if y'all printed it out and saw that, but it has like a 1 o'clock date. They were still meeting at 1 o'clock. So it had like a 1:05 or 1:30, something like that date, but anyway, so, so I said all that to say, I did the best that I could in portraying what happened, you know, I had to, all it did was kept asking me the same question, I feel, over and over, and I just kept providing the same answer over and over because, you know, that's just what I did. So we have to do this reporting after every meeting, and they'll be monitoring us, and they, they say that the education, the sole decision is up to him whether or not we violate the order. I think if it's, if that is the case, and he says we violate the order, like, today, he could, he could watch the meeting today, and if it's a bad day for him, I guess he could say, "We violated the order." But I think if that's the case, I'm hoping that we'd have three votes to, to fight that and contest that. So then, on last Monday, August 25th, I drove up to Tallahassee and met, I missed Attorney Harmon from Sniffin' and Spellman. They, and they was the Charter Appeal Committee, a five-member committee made up, three appointees, of all of them appointed, but three of them seen the report pro-charter. Two were from district schools, Orange County and Miami-Dade County. The Dade representative, she got six, so she was by, she was virtual. And so the, the, that, that actual appeal they were hearing, because, you know, we were contesting whether or not the threshold for the administrative rule that we all agreed upon, that that vote would be held by if that was met. You all probably remember, Dr. McNeely and Mr. Voo, that they, the charter group, the parents, they said that they wanted to trigger this vote. We all went to the administrative rules, 6A point something 38 or something like that, and it said that majority of the teachers, majority being 50 plus one, as well as the parents agreeing and to vote yes, that it would converge. So there were 44 teachers, 22 voted for it, 22 against. The districts, it, based on the administrative rule, said that, and everybody agreed that it didn't pass. Then there was this discussion, or where their then-mayor emailed someone at DOE about that and said the statute was different. So we had this questionnaire when we got there, or the sheet here, and the first question was, the issue one was, was, did the conversion vote satisfy the threshold requirement? And that was, I was, I was hopeful, you know, initially, with the questioning, the evidence that Mr. Harmon presented on our behalf that was in the application, and the questions that were asked of me, and the discussion by the board, I really thought that we kind of had a chance to win, but the vote ended up being 2-2. The, the district staff voted that it didn't meet the threshold because it changed, you know, they were changing the criteria after the vote had taken place. And the two charter people that were there, sitting in the chair, they voted and said that it did. So I knew it was downhill from there, all the other questions, and I can give you guys a, a copy of this, this, this form here, the sheet here. I kind of started writing on it, then I stopped. So that brings me to us having a discussion about what else do we like to do about this. You know, we had a citizen tonight, you know, posed a question. I think we've gotten one email, I saw before I logged off today, about us pursuing this. We've had the Charter Review Committee that they made their application to, all appointees by the governor. We had this group here, appointees slanted charters. I, 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 I think if we go before administrative judge or whoever that judge would be, I think we get, we would possibly have a fair hearing, would hope for a fair hearing than what we've had here, because it just seems that, you know, it is what it is. So I don't know what we're perceived from there. So that's, that's, that announcement. Then, the third thing I'd like to bring to, we've had lots of this, several emails we've gotten about the PEP, and I shared some info with Dr. Patton earlier today before I logged I think you all should read, and I'm, I'm going to share it with you all, but I, when I, when I ran to, to, for a school board seat, it was because I wanted to, I wanted to see all children do better, especially children of color. But I am a fierce public school advocate, and I am also of the mindset that a lot of what is happening currently and has over the past 20 years has been just a chip in a way of the structure of public education towards privatizing it. And I think what is going to be, this, the vouchers and this PEP, you know, personal education plan for homeschoolers, I, I don't, I think we, we cannot normalize what is happening and make folk, and, and start just kind of complying with a lot of this stuff, or not going to say complying, because we have to follow the law. But the law actually, in the Step Up for Students thing, they, they say in their book, "There is no requirement for public schools or charter schools or school districts to contract for services with a scholarship participant or to set up an account for payment as a provider. Participation is optional for public schools or districts." And I think the, the leeway that these people that are getting the PEPs have in the education savings account, I shared with you all previously, that, you know, this being able to, to break up and kind of shop for school services how you want it, it, it is going to destroy... want it, it, it is going to destroy public schools. And if you make people, people think they can come and take a class here and there, you know, the district has to fund that. We gotta, we had to take care of that building. We have to have staff there. We got safety and security requirements. And then we got somebody who want to drop in and take one class and pay for one class. That doesn't sit well with me. And I don't want to normalize that. And the, the folks who get that ESA, there's, there's just a lot of things that just cause me angst with that, in the sense that if they don't spend, they can, they can buy like theme park tickets. They can buy costumes, bibbidi, bibbidi bobbidi boots, Disney thing. I heard that on the FSBA website, I mean webinar they had a few weeks ago. Bibbidi bobbidi boutique. I was like, what in the heck is that? And there's some costumes that you can go on the Disney website and buy. They could use money out of the ESA to do that. Like, so if you have a PEP, Personal Education Plan, you're getting that voucher, you can go buy that. And it's in TVs, stand mixers, Legos, backyard swings. It's all that's included, considering instructional materials. And then they could also come, we got this person that's emailing us and threatening us by who they know or whatever, because they want to take a class with us. But, so they want to come and pay us for that. And I'm just like, if you made your choice, I'm, I'm, I'm of the thing, it, it provides an opportunity and it provides choice. That is the law, right? But you want the, the district, for whatever reason, then you want to come, you reject the district for whatever reason, then you want to come, you want to take one class. That's just, I don't know how y'all feel about it. But that, that, that's giving me heartburn. And I think that before we just enter into that, that's something I'm gonna ask Superintendent, she bring to the board, and we, we vote on that. If that's something that, that's a path that we want to go down. I don't think that's something that we're just, Superintendent Patton, I am 100% for you operationalize and taking care of operation. But with something like this, I think that is something that the board would definitely have a vote on, because that is, I think we, we should, we should have some say-so on that, because that's not something that we have to just go down on. And, um, yeah, I, I wasn't quite done, but you can ask me a question. Go ahead.
So you mentioned, isn't it a state mandate that these students that are in the professional
The personal education?
Right.
It is not. No, it's not a requirement. No.
They're not, they're not?
No, it's not a requirement for us to offer services to them. That's in the Step Up book.
Okay, so we're, so if they live in the district and they want, like this particular student that we're discussing, that wants to take an extracurricular class, not during school day, but after school, correct?
No, he wants to take it during, I heard, I, my understanding was that-
Required to after school, were required.
After school.
But after school programs are actually all required by law, but during school-
Not during, I'm talking about during school.
Oh, okay. So I was, I was talking about the after school one.
Oh, no, I'm not, yeah.
They're allowed to do that.
Oh, yeah, they can do that. And they can play sports. They can do all that. I don't know, I don't know how much of it's happening.
Unless their school, if it's a high school student, has FSBA, like if they have a football team, you can't play in our football team.
Right.
And I just do want to offer like a different opinion on this, because, you know, I, I am someone who's in support of offering PEP students classes here, because we also get to decide what we charge for them. It's not like the state's mandating that. And to me, I'm not gonna say no to money. And what really, for real, like, and what really enlightened me of this was meeting with actually a lot of parents who had alternate choice, most homeschool parents last summer. And a lot of them were saying stuff like, they feel like their, the relationship between homeschool families and the school district is adversarial, very antagonistic. And they feel a lot of confidence being able to homeschool and teach their students up to maybe middle school. But once it gets to the high school level, they're, they're left with very few options. And they would like to be able to send their students to our public schools part-time for certain things. They literally don't feel confident teaching. Like, I'm not teaching my kid like AP Bio, like, no. I don't know anything. I, I'd have to say once chapter ahead of a kid. I don't think that's very effective. I'm sure Ms. Plankback knows you can't teach science that way. But like, so to me, it's just, you know, we can't change the landscape, right? And so to me, it's either, the analogy is, we can either just sit there and try to stop the tide of water, or we can flow with it. And to me, it's like, okay, why not just be more open to this, be more open to different ways of getting funding from these families? You know, they get a set amount of money from the state. Are they willing to pay $2,000 for, you know, an AP course or something like that? And other districts, even before the PEP scholarships, already offered things like, hey, you can take an online AP Calculus with us, but you just have to pay us money, because we're not getting, we don't want your district to split FTE with us, et cetera. So, I mean, to me, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's something we could start doing. And it's my understanding that we're currently writing a policy on this, correct, that will come before the board? Right. So, you know, eventually it will become before us. Anyway, we'll have that discussion, and we'll see what the will of the board is.
Yes, yes.
So, can you just clarify to me what the next step is with the Newberry Charter? You said something that administrative, or what's going, or it's dead?
We, we have not decided as a board. That's something I'm hoping we would put on the agenda to entertain what the next step would be.
I didn't know.
And we can, but there is, we voted to proceed with a, with an, with the appeal. There wasn't even, there is nothing, there is no methodology already written for conversion, for districts to appeal the converted charter, charter thing. So we submitted something, kind of precedent-setting, because the statute wasn't written, or nor the administrative rule for, for what we have. They have a pathway for, for the conversion charter folks to appeal, but not for districts, so.
Okay.
So nothing that I would probably end up putting something on the agenda when I can talk with legal staff as to what they think our next step would be or could be, so.
They didn't mention that at the meeting, though, right? They just, you guys left the meeting, they just kept going to decide, I think, right?
Um, it'll, the next thing is it'll go to, their decision will be referred, it'll be at the next Board of Education meeting, which I think is September. I can't remember the date. I can tell you the date. But, you know, it'll probably, you can bank money that they're gonna approve that. What was really interesting, and what was really shocking, right? It came up about some of the concerns the district had about them serving ESC students. This is the slippery slope we're on. So folks want choice, and they want to go and do all this stuff, but the, the person on that board says, well, it doesn't matter if they can't serve districts, if serve ESC students. They're part of the LEA, and the LEA can serve them. That was actually said in the meeting, and the local, local education association, that means the district. They said, I, I looked like, you know how they say like a picture's worth a thousand? Where I was like, wow, they really said the quiet part out loud. They actually said that. It's okay if they can't serve ESC students, you know, because you're part, the, the district can just take up the slack. So if the parents, they, if the parents are told that the, the conversion charter can't serve the students. So, but you know, if we chop up and marketplace so much of the offerings that we have, we may not be, it's gonna stress the resources of the district. Already, right now, serving our students with disabilities is really a challenge due to funding and personnel and things of that nature. So if you're diverting resources and, and trying, there's only so many ways to slice and dice that pie.
But we already do that. Like, I, I know for private school students, we do the evals. You know, it's our staff that does it. It's not like it's not happening now.
Say it again, Dr. Patton. You said?
And we do for charters, too. We have to do the evaluations.
And so do, do we get compensated for that?
We get speech if they need speech. There's a lot that we still do already.
Yeah. So it's like, it's already stuff we have to provide anyway. It's not like necessarily this would change anything. To me, it just gives us more money with which to do this. It's not like what we have to provide changes.
You said it's not like what we have to provide changes, but we don't get any more money to do that.
That's what I mean. Like, we're already doing it. And so in terms of like PEP and stuff like that, allowing these students to, unless we're talking about just simply the conversion here, but like for, nothing really changes. Like, to me, it's not like the burden is already there. Now, is it an unfair burden? 100%. I think it's an unfair burden. The state has set it up this way to where basically we have, it's an unfunded mandate, right? But that, that doesn't really change even with this or any of the other things we've been discussing.
Well, I just want to be sure the board knows, because maybe you do or don't know, that you've already been servicing the homeschool kids this way. So if a homeschool kid wants to take one course, they've been taking it here for a long time. They want to take three courses, they've been doing that. So just the difference is, as I understand it to be, the homeschool kid, it's easier for us with the funding, because we just declare the FTE, because they're actually registered with us. This one's one extra step, literally step up.
Because with PEP, we can't claim FTE for those kids.
Just to be sure, five of you understand, you're already doing this with homeschool students. So I don't want somebody to get caught off guard.
And I have one other, October being LGBTQ History Month. We work on our proclamation for that, I'm Dr. Patton, and I'll email you that. But if we could do that for October, the October meeting. Okay. So that's all I have, Dr. Pat.
Sorry, just, just to give you that little preview of the policy, too, is that when it does come back, so to all five of you, it is going to be your choice. Do you want to choose to give them ESC services? Do you want to charge them? All those things will come back into a policy as to what you want to do with that, too. With the PEP kids, if you, if you decide that that's what we want.
Okay. Do you have any announcements or anything, Dr. Patton? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. McNeely.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dr. McNeely.
Madam Chair, I'd like to request under, you are at request now, are you not?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. Okay, well.
No.
I'm gonna let Dr. McNeely go ahead and go. She's, go ahead, Dr. McNeely, since she's there. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'd like for, on the next agenda, to be placed a superintendent search on the next agenda. We need to look at that. Our time is rolling fast. Talking with FSBA, normally you would start in late October or middle of October, but past that date, being here as a school board member in the past, it's not done on, in one month. We've had months and months of time for interviews and for people coming in. And I'm going to ask that we put on the next school board meeting agenda, a superintendent search.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Dr. McNeely. We need to have that discussion as a board to decide how we want to move forward with that. And it's definitely something we need to have sooner than later, just considering, again, when I first came on the board in November, we were very lucky to get Dr. Patton, we were very lucky to have Dr. Patton. But, you know, it was one of those situations to where just November was too late to start. And so I just don't want to fall into that trap again. And then we, as a board, decide what we want to do in terms of like timelines, in terms of, you know, Dr. Patton's only here for so much time. And so, yeah, it, it is a discussion we need to have.
So, come on, Ms. Ward, I'll, I'll let you go, and then I'll say what I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Chair Surtan. I'm Carmen Ward, Alachua County Education Association President. Thank you to the board and for Dr. Patton, providing the union this time. The union is 50 years old. We are going to be celebrating our 50-year anniversary in October this year. But that's, that's very exciting. We had a, we celebrated at our Labor Day, at a Labor Day breakfast this weekend, and we had a, a Labor Day drawing for our members. And we have two winners that I want to announce, Anna Luisa Matos Bradley from Meadowbrook, and James R. Green from Newberry High School. So we have, each of them are winners in our giveaway. And so they're going to be hearing what they got tomorrow. But I just wanted to say, I'm hearing a lot from educators that we are, in many places, having class sizes that are exceptionally large this year. And we are all committed to the success of every student. I heard Board Chair Surtan mention that she ran because she wanted all students in our county to be successful. And if we are overcrowding our classrooms, those learning environments are no longer safe. And there's a lot of concern about safety and under-resourcing with less people doing the work. So it's more burden on everyone who's in place, as far as the clerical or paraprofessionals or teachers. Everyone is feeling the pressure from being under-resourced. And a lot of educators are also concerned about having limited resources and being micromanaged to do things like focus boards that are poster-size objectives posted at the front of the room that may not even be as accessible to every student as something you're projecting. But it's almost like we're going backwards to be uniform across our district without being reasonable or progressive with our methods. So there are a lot of concerns about that that have been coming to me. I do appreciate, we have open communication. I talked to Debriteri, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources about specific issues. And I do want to announce that we have agreed to kick off joint salary negotiations this Thursday. So that is very exciting news. You heard from some of our members, leader, leader members in our union tonight that are very concerned about being able to continue their work because of the pay and the hours. Hours being cut has really devastated a lot of employees in this district. And I think we can do better than stacking them deep and teaching them cheap. That's not what this mission of this county is. The county's mission is to be committed to the success of every student, not do it as cheaply as possible at the expense of every student. So I just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to Thursday's joint salary negotiations, and, and more will be announced, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Okay. All right, so, okay, I don't have anything else. Dr. Patton, you have anything?
Yeah, what I was just gonna say is that, of course, we just always want to continue to thank teachers, parents, or administrators. But also wanted just to be sure to thank our business community. The amount of backpacks, school supplies, and everything else that they provided, countless number of nonprofits, for-profits, businesses, when you go around, you see 10% off for teachers, this or that. So it's not just for kids. But just thanks to our business community. We sometimes forget to say that when, because we're so embedded within our own. So just big thanks to everybody. Thanks.
You know, I, actually, I do want to say something. So I think the focus boards are probably a part of the, what's the green company? Instructional empowerment? Okay. So being a board member who has visited schools that were in turnaround status, that focus board, standards-based focus board, is something that was looked for by our rep who comes from DOE. I see Mr. Sims back there. So I, it's disappointing to hear folks, if, if staff are saying they don't want to have that board up, because schools in a turnaround status need it. They, there, it's kind of like a requirement for them, is one of the things that they need. And for me, having looked at data that's been disaggregated, a lot of students have not done well in our district, in some schools that are not in turnaround status. So I think some of the instructional empowerment techniques and things that they're, that, that their methodology and what they're doing, I can, I can kind of buy into that, because I see value in it. And I, because I saw it was kind of, some of the things were being, I don't say mandated, but being encouraged in our schools that were in turnaround status. So since we have so many students of color that are, that are around the district, that are, that are outside of the schools, that are in the east, that are in turnaround status, that can benefit from that, I would hope that our professionals around would, would embrace new methodologies, new ways of, of doing business, so that they could, can broaden the net and who the students that they reach, and that everybody could be successful. Because right now, we have so many students who, who are not successful. And that, and, but they, they could be concentrated. But we, if you go and look at the data, you know, but they, they could be concentrated, but we, if you go and look at the data, you know, disaggregated by, we can see there's room for improvement. So I can, I can buy it, and I can support that.
They don't tell us too, the reason that they encourage the hard copy is because when you do use a projection, as was mentioned, the problem with that is that you move on to the next slide, so that immediately goes away. So that's why the encouragement is to really have something that stays there for, not just the student to see, but also for that teacher to see. Sometimes they teach multiple subjects, so, you know, it's just, it's a win-win on both of those kind of things.
All right, there's nothing else, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Dr. McNeil just reminded me to, or asked about me just sharing a couple things. So we're always looking for new ways to help, right, to use technology, to help efficiencies and potentially save costs. So one that I had mentioned to the board, that just thought we mentioned out here then, is they have new mowers that are kind of like a Roomba, that you can actually set, and can actually cut the grasses, cut the fields, cut the lawns, very more nimbly, it's not the, so that, you can actually have the person that would have been mowing, doing something else, it can also paint the lines on our fields, on our parking lots, in a much, in more inexpensive technique, way, it's even less paint, it's about a fourth of the paint compared to what they do, because they can mix it with water. So just, you know, again, we, we always look to the classroom, avoid, like, how can we help with efficiencies, but sometimes it's those technology things, so thanks for reminding me, Dr. McNeil.
I have one of those little devices, a little squeegee from one of those things I got at the Cosba thing I meant to bring back, I think I gave it to Ms. Yunus.
I don't know if this is a question for you, Superintendent Patton, or, that's okay, or, or in one of our meetings about this mowing thing, when I read it, my heart clutched, because I thought about some of the delays and things that we do have with individuals who contract with us. But I also know that many of our contracted services depend on these jobs, so that's something I want to discuss with you, to see-
They can't do landscaping, they can cut grass, you know, like you still have to have people trim bushes-
Okay, so you would not be eliminating contract-
You can't eliminate-
All right, thank you, then I was thinking wrongly.
No, that's all right.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent.
Is it? Okay, all right, if we, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned at 8:31.